Everybody, uh, long call please.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Kane, President, Champion.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
So we're going to have a minute of a silent prayer, please, and then we will have, um, Flag Salute by Boy Scout through 119. Color guard attention. Color guard forward march. Color guard halt. Very close colors. Close colors. Please don't mean the flag of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, et cetera. Two. Color guard three. Audience, ready? Okay Liz, would you please read the video statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable System. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thanks Liz. Are there any agenda approval additions and or deletions, council?
Like a full E3 please.
E3, okay. Councilmembers, anyone else?
I'm good.
Good, okay. Then we will start with a presentation by the City Clerk's Office, Welcome to Galt, how appropriate.
Of course.
Just a few.
Cause everybody's here.
Do you want me to take it off the screen and get it back on?
Yeah. What'd you do chief? There we go. Sorry about that.
Good evening Mayor Powers and City Council. As you know, my name is Donna Settles and I'm a Deputy City Clerk. I'm here to tell you about a service the Clerk's Office provides to the community called Welcome to the City of Galt. The program started more than 10 years ago. The program begins with a new resident report that's produced by the Finance Department four times a year and sends, they send it over to the City Clerk's Office and that report includes not just people that have moved into the city of Galt, but also residents that have changed homes. From that list, we create the mailing. We mail anywhere from 100 to 150 letters per quarter. The cover letter first welcomes the residents to their new home, but the goal of the program is not only to welcome them, but to encourage them to register to vote. So we include in the mailing voter registration cards. We pick up the box of the, excuse me, we pick up the box of these cards from the Sacramento Voter Registration Office about once a year, they have provided free of charge to the City Clerk's Office. As the cover letter states, this is one of the important things people often forget to do, is to re-register to vote with their new address. We also include one more item, a guide to city services. This is a brochure that was created by the City Clerk's Office. The brochure includes all the contact information and a brief description of the services provided by each department. We have also included a few Sacramento County phone numbers such as animal control, the library, and Sacramento County Transit. This concludes my mini presentation, are there any questions? And for the audience, as we know, tonight was the opening act, to be followed by the main event, which is the Wilton Rancheria. No questions?
Thanks Donna.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Donna.
And now we will have the main event, the Wilton Rancheria.
All these guys rushing to get their microphones up there.
It's like I knew I forgot something.
Did everyone see?
Yes sir. Oh man, that sucks, doesn't it?
Well, good evening, Mayor Powers and City Council. My name is Andrew Franklin, I'm the Chairman of Wilton Rancheria and I'm here tonight to ask for your feedback on a project, proposed project just north of Galt. Uh, first a little bit about the tribe, we're a local Indian tribe and the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County. Uh, I am the full-time Chairman of the tribe. I've taken hiatus from my professional career as an engineer to serve in this capacity. I'm from the Sacramento area, uh, I grew up in, born and raised in Sacramento, uh, went to Hiram Johnson West Campus High School, um, then I got my degree from UC Berkeley in mechanical engineering. Uh, also here with me tonight is our tribal council, uh, seated in the front row right here, um, also Vice Chairman Dennis Hefington, Councilman Raymond Hitchcock, Councilman David Andrews, Councilman Mark Andrews, Councilwoman Tanya Caldwell, Councilwoman Annette Williams, and Councilwoman Tony Espinoza. Um, and we have one that's missing and that's Councilwoman Joyce Dozier. Uh, Joyce and Tanya are actually residents of Galt, uh, longtime residents of Galt, uh, their families live here and, you know, have been here, went to high school here, grew up here, um, so Galt is, you know, close to home for us. Um, to go into a little bit more detail about the tribe, Wilton Rancheria was terminated in 1959. Uh, after years of struggle to regain our federal government status, we restored as a fairly recognized tribe by the federal court order on June 8, 2009. We then began the process of rebuilding our government, electing an interim tribal council in March 2010 to develop the tribe constitution. Now, the constitution is, is modern for an Indian tribe. Uh, we separate the powers, um, from Chairman and Vice Chairman, um, to tribal council and, and from our, uh, we also have a framework for our tribal court. Uh, we wanted to keep a balanced power in our government, uh, and make it more modern for, for Indian tribes. Uh, we're very excited about our new constitution and government, uh, we developed, uh, oh, we also had our first tribal elections under this new constitution that just occurred last April where I was elected Chairman, I have a four-year term, um, until June 2016 and then I may be re-elected for another four-year term. Uh, we do two-year, uh, two consecutive terms and then you have to take a break. Now, just in the past year, we have developed and implemented tribal programs at departments related to environmental protection, cultural rights, housing, health, education, emergency assistance, and child welfare. Our goals are to be able to provide education, health, housing, and other social services to our members. We also seek to finally create jobs with benefits for the unemployed, the underemployed, members of our community and the communities around us. Currently, a third of our staff is, is actually non-Indian. Um, now that, now, back to what brings me here today, the, the tribe's court order restoration also entitled the tribe to renew its jurisdiction over the tribe's former rancheria. Now, it's just located near the rural, rural community of Wilton, California, which is just on the other side of Highway 99. However, we don't currently own any land at the rancheria and are considered a landless tribe. Now shortly after the restoration, the county of Sacramento and the city of Elk Grove went to federal court concerned about future development of the tribe. Now, it seemed fairly clear to us that county of Sacramento and city of Elk Grove had concerns about the potential development of their site, um, because of the rural nature of Wilton, and this is a concern that we understand and respect. Now, because of these concerns, we have spent considerable time looking and reviewing, um, looking for potential project sites just further south in the county. Um, fortunately, we were able to find alternative sites and we were able to, uh, we're, we can re-establish our community, our government, our, in, in economic development for the tribe. Fortunately, we were able to locate, um, tribal ground, uh, potential site near our tri- tribal burial grounds, and that's the Hicksville Cemetery, you guys might be familiar with that. Um, now this is located just off of 99 at Arnold Road. Um, so back when I'm here, we would appreciate your feedback today on proposed site, which I refer to as a seven mile site, and this is because I don't refer to it as the burial site. Now, it's a site just north of city limits of Galt, south of Arnold Road, and west of Highway 99. Now, after some preliminary meetings with the county and the cities, we have asked that the BIA take land into trust for the tribe at this site for a purpose of opening a gaming facility. We believe that the city would experience significant benefits to clearly both direct and indirect support to key services. In addition, the casino would create approximately 2,000 new jobs and because of the adult membership of the tribe, which is only 360, over 82% of those jobs would go to local community members. Now, in any development or operations conducted, we're always looking to be good neighbors and that's exactly what brings us here tonight. To be able to create and open and conduct communications with the city, city manager, and community development department at every step of the way. To further boost our confidence in this project, last summer the tribe entered into an agreement with Boyd Gaming Corporation to develop and operate a gaming facility on our behalf. The tribe selected Boyd because it's family-owned, because it was, began as a family-owned business and it's still kind of, it's still run that way with those, those values. Boyd's facilities tend to reflect the family-oriented nature as being a destination for the entire family. Boyd is one of the nation's largest and most respected gaming operators and has a longstanding commi- commitment to developing strong positive partnerships with local communities. For example, Boyd Gaming endowed Nevada's first law school at UNLV, which is the Boyd School of Law, William Boyd School of Law. In addition, Boyd Gaming was responsible for introducing the Boys and Girls Club of both northern and southern Nevada. Now, for their sense of community, the tribe selected and it fell right in with the tribe's mission to create partnerships with our surrounding communities. The tribe is also has a strong desire to ensure that any development occurs is environmentally sensitive. The tribe's members that live and vote, live here precisely because of the small-town community and feel. Now, as a result, the tribe has no desire to disrupt the nature of the community that we also greatly value. Rather, we seek to create development that is harmonious and respectful of that fundamental nature. In addition, the Bureau of Indian Affairs will be conducting a complete environmental impact statement regarding the site and the tribe looks forward to working with Galt and the county of Sacramento to mitigate any significant impacts that are discovered during this process. Now, for the next, next steps, there'll be several opportunities for public comment. Although there has not been a date that has been finalized, the BIA will hold a public scoping hearing, uh, where that'll be opened up to public comment for everyone. Uh, they will produce, w- w- when we get some dates, we'll make sure that they're posted in the local newspapers for everyone. So, I ask you, what are your initial thoughts on the project site? And I want to thank you very much for listening to us today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think if it's okay with council, we're gonna open it up to public comment first and you guys can save your comments till after. Okay, so I'm gonna open it up for public comment.
Dee Carson, after Dee, Lisa, ten minutes?
Good evening. My name is Dee Carson. I'm a resident in this area since 1960. I've watched the growth of every one of you sitting up here and I'm proud to see each and every one of you sitting in the seats you're sitting in, watching how hard each one of you worked with no compensation, with just giving of yourselves. And I want to tell you, I am very proud of each one of you and our council, our manager, and our chief. Thank you very much for each one of you being the person you are. I'm very proud of the people sitting behind me, my neighbors, my businessmen, their fellow people. What I would like to ask is, we heard a nice presentation, it's just the beginning. In pre-1960, Elk Grove and Galt were the same size. Look what happened with the leadership in Elk Grove and what they did. What if, prior to all of us, we'd had something that was a little more foresight, a little more looking forward, to where we'd have done something a third of what they did, so we didn't have the major problems that they have, and even up to half? And look at the growth that we would have had, had we not been a no-growth, slow-growth type of community. We wouldn't be contributing extra money to the police department in taxes that they sorely need for the specialty problems that we have. They need that money, they should have it. But we could have done it in a better way. Here, we're offering another way for us to have growth in our community, more jobs. Look at what would happen to, say, the McDonald's and all the little fast food places that we cherish and we all duck in and duck out of, 2,000 more people and jobs just up the road, you think they'll duck in and out? You bet they will. Then you'll have the people that are gonna go find the Gary's Deli, the Bella Creamery, and the Brewster's, and they're gonna spend money. They're gonna find Parker Rilletti, O'Hara, and our nice person that builds homes that's sitting over here. All the time, we were all looking for something to help our town. And I'm asking for all of the constituents in our audience to please listen with open hearts and open minds and learn and grow and grow our town. Thank you.
Thank you Dee.
Thank you Dee.
Lisa, ten minutes? After Lisa, Al Baldwin?
Hello council, city council, um, attendees. My name's Lisa Aguilar Jimenez, I am the historical family of Wilton Rancheria, Tribal Council Chairperson. I am seeking for no casino, for you guys to not entertain, um, the idea of having a casino. We have 160 people voted off, we are a split tribe. I have all the tribes that, the other casinos that are backing me up, gonna be financial that we are gonna put a stop to this. We, up to this last hour, I was asked not to go ahead and show a presentation, they finally want to listen to me, it's too late. I have no time to waste, I have 160 people left off. My great-great-grandfather, Alex Zoo, had founded the Wilton Rancheria. The Galt Arnold District, Hicksville Cemetery is based on our family, family name. Wilton wants to have part of that, they are included, they are our family. But we do not need permission to have our people buried there. They want to take and strip that land and our people. They stripped the oldest tribal member, she's 92, my aunt, Iris Mello, she's left off the tribe. We are the historic family. My mom served 20 years, our family has served over 20 years, dedicated our time, sweat, money, out of our own pocket to see that Wilton is recognized. They went on the 1990 mediation stipulation to go ahead and include the census families. Upon restoration, they left our families off. We didn't find out till a year later. Rose Weckman, their attorney, has falsified information, she has not represented, Kristen Akagi was the original lawyer, she even cut her own partner's throat. Look it up, it's all, it's, you know, and I want to meet with you guys in two weeks. It has been over a million dollars in bail payment, I will submit everything in front of you, they are not for the people, we've submitted information to go ahead and help these members, help these tribal members for education. They have not even helped, $5,000 for my daughter, I even asked my daughter, can you go ahead and speak, she goes to St. Mary's College, I have one graduate from Jesuit, Seattle U, can we help with education, cause you guys are about education, you're about the people, why are you leaving our people off? No, we're not, we're not gonna help you, $5,000, but yet, in their budget, they go ahead and ask for all this money. You got more money for a baseball field, baseball hat, jerseys than they do the people, than the people. They are out only for money. They left family members, history out, they don't care about the history. Termination start, started in 1958. Our family moved off because we wanted to work, we wanted housing, we wanted better, we are not on the system. But yet, they leave our families off because we want to do better. Our family had a house there, we have family born, raised there, we have first cousins recognized, others terminated, they had a motion to intervene to accept and have our census families off. I have, um, with Galt Arnold District, um, Tim, that we are fighting to go ahead and keep the cemetery a family cemetery. It's not a tribal, it's not any kind of cemetery to go ahead and have it pop, uh, any politics included. I asked the council to go ahead and meet with us numerous times.
Your time's up, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I keep, keep going, so, you know, I'm, you know.
Al Baldwin?
Good evening, Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, and it's a, a city, a town, a village of character. And tonight, uh, you're, you're listening to really a group of people that I respect quite a bit, it's the Miwoks. Uh, being a little involved with history, we've helped them put on some programs with the Historical Society, whether or not they remember, or there was some. But tonight, we're talking about a casino. And I'm not against or even for, I can't say I'm against or even for a casino. I would like to see this city, because it's a very smart city, uh, have major discussions and public discussions about something like this. This is, this is great, the turnout is wonderful, but you need to have our city discuss this and, and have some kind of question and answer period and maybe representation in a much larger place than this is now. There's a lot of good that the Miwoks can bring us with a casino, but there's also challenges with something like this. And some of the challenges could be traffic, they could be, um, oh, I don't know, we're gonna go to six lanes on 99, and so that tells us one thing, that there's gonna be a lot more traffic on 99, this is going to be great for them pulling it off, but we also have a sewage plant that's gonna have to, uh, work a little overtime, we're gonna have to increase that, the capacity and such, and we're gonna do some other things. And there's so many questions, because we, we, we moved our sphere of influence a quarter of a mile north, but, you know, it might be better if we could go even farther up to Arnold Road because of the, the structure, the way it is, and if this is decided tonight, that would be excellent for them, it would be excellent for us. I'm an advocate of going and moving our sphere up to Arnold Road, so we have a lot more leeway with businesses. The Miwoks, by the way, the history is so good, uh, i- i- it's just wonderful. Now, what other people do with things, I can't answer that, but the Miwok's history and reputation is, is just super wonderful, I think you should listen to them, you should, uh, have meetings on it in Galt especially, because we're the ones that's gonna be concerned about what goes on over there and what goes on around that casino with construction, what's gonna go on at Twin Cities Road, have, I'm sure they'll be able to help us, we have a lot of things that's gonna be going on in Galt, we have homes coming into Galt, the whole system is changing around, you reduce a lot of things that, uh, in money-wise, that are bringing people to look at Galt. So I'm, I'm urging you to make this public more and have more discussion, I don't think you can make a decision tonight, but I appreciate the Miwoks coming here, they're a great group, thank you so much.
Thanks Al.
Do we have anyone else, Ms.?
I have no speakers, no further speakers here.
Okay, I'm gonna close, uh, the public comment section and ask council, uh, if somebody can come on up. Yes, sure. Let me open it up again. Could you just please state your name and if you live in the city of Galt?
Yeah, my name is Charlie Banks Altcrus and, uh, I actually live in the Bay Area in Berkeley, California, but I work, have the honor and pleasure of working with tribes and actually have worked with, uh, two tribes recently that have near the conclusion of their process. And I just wanted to mention, uh, from my perspective, I have no professional relationship with the, the tribe, though I have had the occasion to talk with them and get a sense of where they're coming from. But I just wanted to say that it, the process can be extremely rewarding, the two tribes that I've worked with, Enterprise Rancheria and North Fork Rancheria, have established deep and profound relationships with the local jurisdiction. And this is really isn't just a tribal thing, this is a community project. And I think this tribe will bring the right spirit and the right, uh, resources to bear. And it's something, together with you, um, you'll have the opportunity, so the last speaker's, um, comments, I think it was Mr. Baldwin, um, this is a long process, it's a long and rigorous process, there are numerous opportunities for the community to weigh in. And the best of circumstances, it doesn't have to be adversarial. There are sometimes some difficult decisions, as we also heard from other speakers, to weigh through, um, but I'm certain that the Indian community, um, can come together and can figure those out. But what's more important is the opportunity for you as a jurisdiction to establish a relationship with the tribe and to be co-creators in this process. In the best of situations, it can be, uh, a magnificent process for everybody and, as I said, I've had the pleasure and honor of working with two tribes that are far along that process and, uh, be happy to, uh, put you in touch with, uh, members of those, uh, representatives of local officials in those jurisdictions. And they will attest that, um, it's really the best thing that has come to those communities. And I think the proof of the pudding in the longer, bigger picture is this thing going to aid this community. There are approximately 60 tribal gaming projects in the state of California at this time. Now, that may sound like a lot, but there are almost 120, uh, tribes, so actually about half the tribes don't have casinos and, and probably more than half of the tribal citizens don't have an opportunity to benefit from it, um, at this point. But of those 60-plus tribal projects, I'm not aware of one single project where that local community, um, opposes that project or wants to get rid of it. You know, once they're built, and particularly if they're built in the right spirit, um, they are magnificent, um, social and economic, um, benefits to, to those communities. So I think that's where the, um, uh, the proof of the pudding is, and that's the challenge for you as a jurisdiction to work with this tribe, to make sure that the best possible project is built for your community. So good luck, I wish you the best and we'll stay tuned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lloyd McKean?
I'm not a very good speaker, but, uh, I do want to talk about sense of community. My great-grandfather is Alec Blue, he worked for the Valencine Ranch off of Arnold Road, uh, this is during the 1800s. My great-grandfather and my grandmother, Annie Blue McKean, we were, they worked there on the ranch also, they lived on Arnold Road. Their children all went to, uh, Arnold School, the old school off of Arnold Road, uh, it's, it's now a home. And, uh, they went to Galt High, all my uncles and my dad, my, uh, dad Charles J. McKean, uh, uh, they all attended, uh, Galt High School. And, uh, they, I think, uh, some of the teachers were Mackenzie and I think some of the, uh, people were Bat Shelter and some of his classmates were Greeno. And, uh, I think there's a picture, uh, that was in the Galt paper about, uh, a couple years ago, it, I think, had the, uh, the students of a Galt, uh, uh, excuse me, Arnold Grammar School, I was, I think it was about 1915, and, uh- it was about 1915. And, uh, my, all my family is in those pictures. And so that is basically a sense of community where we've been here. And in 1930, that they established Wilton Rancheria. In 1930, and my family moved over to Wilton at that time. Otherwise, they'd been a member of the Galt community to this day. So like I say, this is a sense of community and, and we want to be part of it. And we want to work with everyone. And, uh, I think, uh, we are pretty well established in this area. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else left? That's all the speakers.
One of them.
Oh, one more. Okay. Okay. For the record, Ron Hatch.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, others. Um, my name is Ron Hatch. And, uh, I'm a graduate of Belgrove High School. And I remember Galt coming up and kicking our butts all the time. I didn't like that very much. But we won a couple of games anyway. So appreciated that. Um, my sister Joyce Dozier lives here. And I've spent a lot of time in Galt. Um, as a matter of fact, I helped Joyce with the McFarland Ranch Project. And, uh, I'm a member of the Heritage, uh, program here. Uh, so, um, I have a lot of interest in Galt as well and, and this opportunity. Um, I would like to say, you know, that, uh, I'm very, uh, I'm very impressed with our, uh, Wilton Rancheria Council. Um, to give you a little bit of background, uh, I was born in Sacramento, lived out on the Wilton Reservation for the first six years of my life. I was homeless. We lived down by the Consumas River. My mom and dad were alcoholics and, uh, they gave us kids away. Uh, my mom gave us to my great-grandma, um, Alice Daniels Smith. And then the state kept, stepped in and took us kids away and put us in orphanages and foster homes. When I was 14, I was sentenced to six years up in juvenile prison up in Preston and Ione. My probation officer found me a home. And in that home, I was able to help, they helped me change my life, to have a better life. My desire was always to be a dad. I always wanted to be a dad. Uh, some people think I've overdone it now because my wife and I, we have 15 children. We have 12 by birth. We adopted three. And then, uh, we have youth programs. We've worked in, uh, Arizona, Mexico, and Utah. We've helped over 200, or 2,000 students, Native American students over the last 35, 40 years. I currently am the ICWA Director for the Wilton Rancheria. And, uh, I am responsible for the safety of our children and that. And, uh, in doing so, um, in working with tribes across the United States, uh, I am very impressed with our tribal council and the caliber that they are and the work that they do and the honorable people they are. And, uh, so, uh, on behalf of myself, I'm, I'm a, what they call an elder in the tribe. So when we have dinners, I get to go up first. And, uh, so, um, I, I appreciate this wonderful opportunity to come before you and to, uh, share, you know, our desires and to work with you. And, and I give you my word, as well as my sister Joyce and, and my nieces that live here, that we will do our very best to work with you. And, uh,
Good times up. Thank you very much.
Good partners. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you've got some speaker sheets, can you please just bring them down so we know how many more? This is how it usually goes.
Yeah.
One and one and one and one. Oh, it's okay.
No problem.
Any other ones out there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, my name is Eugene Rose. And I live in Wilton. And, uh, first, I'd like to wish the Mewocks all the best of luck in the world. I think they deserve it. Uh, I'm a little bit of a historian, not a, not a real big one, but enough to know that, uh, that they have a, a very, very great history. And unfortunately, it's a great history that too many people don't know about. Uh, I'm hoping also that, uh, with the advent of a casino, that they might, uh, put some real genuine effort into, uh, that kind of history and making it available to the communities of, of this area. So I'm wishing them luck. And I'm hoping they'll take the next step and, uh, do something, uh, to reflect their ancestors, who are the ones who we really should be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Barz?
My name is Linda Barz. I'm a longtime resident of the area. I live in Wilton. And I listen to all the good things that are being said about the casino. And I would just like to say, I would really like people to think about the bad things too that would happen if a casino went in. The extra traffic, the schools would have to be made bigger. There would be pollution. There'd be more crime. And I would also like to ask why people live in Galt and the surrounding areas. Because it's a country rural type area. Move a casino in, take a look at the one up by Roseville. It's no longer country. So, um, that's all I wanted to say. I just want people to think real hard before they really want to approve this and think it's such a great thing. Yes, it would mean extra money in the community, but it'd also mean extra people, extra everything. So, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. I'm going to close public comment. And, uh, council, I'll start over with you, Mr. Campion.
Thank you. Um, I, I, obviously, the city council is not going to make any decisions tonight. I mean, this is a, a very preliminary, uh, an introduction to a concept, um, as indicated, I think, by members of the tribe. Uh, there's a lot of work ahead of you, a lot of studies to be conducted, uh, to answer some of the questions that I think the, the public has raised tonight, including traffic and, uh, concerns with the environment and other fiscal concerns, as well as the extension of utilities and how, how this site would be served. So I think, uh, at least for me personally, uh, I'm intrigued with the concept. Uh, I, I certainly think it's worthy, uh, to study. And, uh, over time, uh, I think the public will, will weigh in as well as the council, uh, on this concept. Um, generally, uh, I, I see it having potential benefits. But again, until all of the information is before us, I think it's a little premature at this time, uh, to give an endorsement or, or not. So, but I certainly wish you good luck and look forward to, uh, the information as it becomes available, uh, as you progress through this process. Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz?
Well, I can pretty much say the same things councilman Campion just a moment, just a moment ago. My only concerns, and again, it's long-term. We're talking at least seven years down the road before this thing ever even thinks about breaking ground. Uh, my areas of concern have been waste water, water, traffic, and crime, which has been feared by others. I am very much looking forward to working with the tribal council. And if this does get off the ground, looking forward to the benefits that it brings both agencies, both the city of Galt and the tribal council.
Councilmember Payne?
Well, I have to say that as a member of the Historical Society, that I have a warm feeling for the Mewock Indians. And you're very much a part of our history when we talk about Galt. Uh, had the wonderful experience of hosting, uh, ceremony at our museum, the Ray House, by the Mewock Indians. And it was very impressive. I can only wish you the best in your endeavors. As we've already mentioned, there's going to be a lot of hurdles for you to, uh, jump over. And I'm sure there's going to be some opposition. As far as the impact to the city of Galt, I feel like it's an opportunity if it's managed well. And I look forward to your progress.
Councilmember Singleton?
Thank you. Uh, I've met the Mewock folks, uh, a few times. I'm very encouraged, uh, uh, by the tribe and what they have planned. Um, you know, you guys are talking about crime and pollution and all that. Well, that's, that's expected with any expansion in any city. And we have ways that we can deal with that. It's, uh, you know, improved enforcement and, uh, um, there's ways that we can handle that. And so I'm just real, uh, I'm, I'm, was happy to meet with the Mewock tribe. Uh, they're very, um, nice folks. And it was, uh, nice that they are open to working with their surrounding communities instead of just saying we're going to do it whether you like it or not. So I'm very encouraged. And I appreciate their presentations tonight. And, uh, as like everybody else, good luck to you. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to say what Dale said. Uh, we do look forward to, uh, talking it around. And this is just the first baby steps, as we've said. And we'll be looking into the pros and cons and, um, meeting with you, meeting with the, the city, meeting with all of our constituents. There, it is a long process. And, uh, we'll be working with each other along the way, just to see if it's the best fit for all of us. I think, uh, my personal opinion is it's, uh, sounds like a go for me. But we'll take our steps and see how things go. Uh, Jason or Steve, did you want to say anything?
No, I think, um, we're all kind of anxious to hear the proposal from the, the tribe. And we look forward to working with them as they go on this journey, um, with the BIA and the county of Sacramento and the city of Galt and get some feedback from the public along the way. And, uh, we'll, we'll see where it takes us.
Okay. Okay. Uh, after this, we are going to take a five-minute break. And, uh, then we'll continue with the rest of the city council meeting. Now, y'all can stick around. We're a lot of fun.
Yeah. That was good. She knows how these meetings go. That was good.
Thank you guys. All said, great. Thank you. All said.
And they're going to leave.
I thought I was going to have a little time. She, uh, she pulled a little foot one on me there.
Well, it's probably by the time we got to the end.
Wow. Interesting. Yeah. I, I, I thought, I don't think, I don't even think we want to say that. We can go talk with them. That's a family. I thought it was very, you know, they might have an internal list. But the only reason they're You want it on or off? It's their hair. Oh, you want it. Did you turn it down?
Anyway, so I think, I just, I was It was on the screen.
Well, I have to explain what's happening. But if you give a crisp, I'll suggest that it's not. It's good. I think I'm going to flip right here. We actually, first I was talking to my family. I don't know what they're doing. Don't hit the law, my family. Stay clear. So I don't know.
We did it right. It was on the screen. Yeah. Actually, that kind of valid is like, okay, all the
Hi, Al Barz.
Uh, maybe there's something we can do.
I'm talking about
No, I think If it's the one that didn't have one, I know. You know, the one guy who didn't have one, I have no idea what the name was. I'm hoping I have to figure it out. Who was it?
He's retired.
I got 20 years. If it doesn't get done before the, it's not going to, it's not coming back.
I sampled it a couple of ways. I reported that he did the wrong stuff.
Oh, you guys? Talk to them. They're helping.
Hi, how are you?
I wonder if, what if they talk to the environmental
Revender R?
The cult? Yeah, but I don't know if that's an all. It was rural. So some
I actually know you guys were waiting. Yeah, I haven't gotten it. Well, I was saying, the one person, I have no idea how to spell his name or
No, he, uh, he brought it up specifically to his sister. He said, uh, he was looking at getting Wilton Rancheria calls. So I, I knew Well, I think it's
I haven't Yeah. Anything anybody wants to, let me know.
Oh, really?
And that's probably waiting their finances.
Yeah. Well, if, if I recall correctly, uh, that's it. One of the, uh, we, uh, was important. Hopefully it doesn't be the old one forever. Cause I know they've seen it and taken a while. That flew. Just like the holy grail of green giant garden snake. So I, you know.
Probably their mouth.
Well, we don't have
We want to move your right up right now? Okay.
Oh, that's 1990. Yeah. I'm not talking to the other people. Yeah. Twelve kids, 15 kids.
Wow. It looks like That's not a word.
Yeah. You have a card?
You don't got one here.
Does it heat it when that happens? Great. Thank you very much. No, but you know what? You're, it does have a contest for any No.
She knows her covering.
Okay, everyone, we're going to reconvene.
We lost all of our audience.
What?
Hey. Very hot. People in the audience are doing this.
It's going right on me. I don't know what's coming. I'm going home. Clear now.
Where's everybody?
Council's discussion and consideration this evening. The first option is a vacant lot that's immediately to the south of Harvey Park. The purchase, the city purchased this property in 2007. It's approximately .4 acres. When the city completed its park master plan back in 2010, the, this parcel was identified as a future tot lot for the city with children's play structures and so forth. There is a, a lack of those types of facilities on the west side of the community and this was developed or proposed to serve that need on the west side of, of the railroad tracks. So despite the recommendation in the Parks and Rec Master Plan, the City Council certainly has the, has the option and the ability to change that as needs change and desires change over the years. Staff's recommendation is that it would go back to the Parks and Rec Commission because that's the body that ultimately that, that first recommended that to the City Council, but that could certainly be done. There are a few zoning issues that would have to be resolved, but again, those could certainly be done. Right now, that, that lot is, is zoned residential. We have to make some, some, some changes to that which require City Council approval, but nothing that would be certainly insurmountable would just be a little bit of staff time to go through that process and get the proper approvals from Parks and Rec Commission, Planning Commission, and the City Council. We do anticipate that there could be a sequel exemption on the site, so we don't anticipate a lot of environmental studies that would need to be required for that site. The site would require grading, drainage. Right now, it's just a vacant dirt piece of property. There's, there's one large oak tree on it, but other than that, it's, it's pretty much just flat and barren right now. We would propose that the area could be approximately 120 feet by 150 feet in size and following amenities could be provided in that area if the council wished to pursue that as a dog park. It's large enough to allow separate areas for large and, and small dog parks similar to the existing dog park we have on the east side of the community. There would be a chain link fence on the outside with dual gates, decompose granite pathway, benches, grass with irrigation, dog friendly water station, signage, pest waste bag stations and trash receptacle, a shade structure, safety lighting, security cameras, and then, right now, that, that lot does not have any connection to the existing park. There's no sidewalks around it and so staff would recommend in order to make that area truly accessible and to, to complete it as part of the larger park that we put in sidewalks and the paving to, to, to make that a, a complete park site. So that would be part of the proposed cost, which, the estimated cost from staff, and keep in mind, this is a very preliminary estimate based on the information we've gathered and the information from our Public Works Department, they're able to gather some stuff because we have built dog parks in the past. We kind of have an idea of what it, what it takes. The estimate is about $340,000 to develop that site in the manner that I just described. Certainly, that could be reduced if certain amenities were taken out such as security cameras or some of the other things, but at least gives you an idea of what we're talking about. The, it would require significant work effort on behalf of, of staff and so staff would recommend that we contract the design work out of that. Staff, all of our design engineers right now are currently engaged in a lot of other CIP projects and so we would, we'd suggest that either be contracted out for design, which would add about $75,000 to the project for a total cost of about $415,000. It's anticipated that the design of the park would take approximately one year and approximately eight to 10, and after that, another eight to 10 months to bid and construct the project once the construction documents are completed. So about two-year total for completion on that site, the total cost of about $415,000. Second option we developed as a, as a smaller park that we can do quicker and cheaper that, that we wanted to present to the council. On the northwest corner of the existing Harvey Park, there's an area that has large oak trees, some, some grass, although it's non-irrigated, so in the, in the summertime, it just, it browns out and it's immediately west of the existing ball field that's there. It's really underutilized, there's not anything, there, there's, there's not really any, any playground structures or other amenities there and staff believes that this area could be converted into a dog park relatively easily and relatively expensively. The, the site would require only basic grubbing and clearing, no grading or additional drainage would be necessary and staff would recommend the following features in this area. It would be smaller than the other one, it would be about 80 feet by 115 feet area. There'd be one large dog park area for both large and small dogs, chain link fence, dual gates, a decomposed granite path, benches, and either some type of decomposed granite or bark surface or instead of adding the cost of irrigation and grass, we can do a less expensive facility. There's also the possibility of cane, what's called canine artificial grass surface, which seems to be a pretty popular option similar to Walker Park, doesn't have all of the, doesn't have the rubber pellets and things in it, but it's, it's, it's quite a popular item. The only concern is cost, it's quite an expensive addition, so if the council was interested in pursuing that option, we want to bring back some other costs, some cost information and, and some ability to find a way to pay for that because we are proposing that the, the area would not be irrigated and this would reduce maintenance costs. We wouldn't have to mow it and irrigate it and other things and, and so all of the options we're presenting are very low maintenance for city staff. And we would have, again, a, a dog friendly watering station, signage, pest waste bag stations with trash receptacles, would be safety lighting added and small watering system to minimize any dust that might be on the property. The total cost to develop this, this portion of the park as a dog park is estimated at $60,000. We believe that the design work can be completed in-house and the total estimated time to design, bid and construct the, the park is approximately eight to 10 months. So again, it can be done relatively with, with less money and in a much shorter period of time than the larger dog park. Of course, there are some, some things and some amenities that may not be available in the smaller dog park that you'd have to kind of weigh and the pros and cons of both options, but we wanted to present to you two different ideas or two different concepts. Both are viable alternatives in, in the location that we're talking about. One obviously just requires significantly more resources and time to develop. And neither, neither option includes the dog training agility amenities that we have at the other facilities with the hoops and the stairs and things that they jump up, but those could be added at a later date through fundraising or, or other initiatives. So those aren't in the initial cost, but they could certainly be added at a later date. We do, there, the recommendation is obviously we're looking for some feedback from the City Council. Council's interested in pursuing a dog park in general in honor of Officer Ton. Certainly, there's other mechanisms to, to, to look at for memorials as well, but this is one that Vice Mayor Singleton proposed and we wanted to bring those options back to the council. Couple of different alternatives that we wanted the council to be aware of is the council could refer the matter before making any decisions this evening, refer the matter back to the Parks and Rec Commission for some feedback, recommendations before providing direction to staff on the desired alternatives and it would add a little bit of time to the, to the process. Alternative two is if the council gives us direction tonight on the various alternative, which one you want, would like to see move forward, that we could provide some conceptual design, more, more definitive things and then bring that back to the city, the Parks and Rec Commission before proceeding further. Again, that would add a little bit of time to the project, but it's certainly something that we could, we could do. If the council isn't prepared to make any, give any direction to staff tonight, certainly the council can, can discuss that and provide any feedback that you wish. Our intent tonight was just to present the different options that are out there with the cost estimates as, as presented by Vice Mayor Singleton and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Excuse me real quick, Jason, I'm sorry. Can you explain what the decomposed granite is, please?
Sure. It's, I'm trying to think if we have any in our existing facilities. I know when we originally built the dog park out at, there was a decomposed granite pathway, not in the dog parks, on the outside, we ended up making, doing a little bit different surface out there, but it's, it's kind of granite, very fine granite material that compacts really well and it provides almost a, a concrete-like surface, but it's not, it's not concrete and it doesn't have the same cost that a concrete surface would, but it still provides a nice walking surface for, for, for pets as well as for the, the owners and it's very low, low maintenance.
Doesn't Tumasi Park have?
Yes, I was gonna say, if you send the Tumasi Oak Park at Emerald Oak and C Street, that pathway through there is decomposed granite.
Oh, it is. Yeah, exactly. Tumasi Park. That's good, thank you.
Council members, any thoughts?
Shall I continue?
Oh, I thought you were done, I'm sorry.
No, I interrupted, Jennifer, I'm sorry. I want to thank staff for taking the time to do this and it is for the community and in my opinion, if the place is council, I, I would like to get some input now that we have numbers and locations from the community, uh, uh, 'cause that's what we're doing this for, for the community and in honor of Kevin Ton. Uh, 'cause I've, I've certainly had a lot of folks in the community say they, this is what they wanted, it's a dog park and they want you to donate towards that. And so if we could get some feedback, that'd give council, in my opinion, better direction and what they would like to see in honor of our fallen officer, our first fallen officer. Can you say it again?
Well?
Were you hesitating?
Yeah, I have. In looking at the two, I, I, I think in, in, in either site, and, and if it is the smaller, well, first, let me say, I think whatever comments council has tonight, I think maybe, um, I, I would recommend that we send it to the, to the Parks and Rec Commission with whatever comments we have, have them have an advertised public meeting to gain additional public input like Councilmember Singleton suggested and then simply incorporate whatever specific comments or ideas that the council may have. The one idea I would have, if it is, if it does go on the, the smaller of the sites, the one in the northwest corner, I think it should have grass. I understand that, you know, there would be a small, which we're proposing, a sprinkler system to abate dust particularly during the summer, but I think grass provides a cooling factor. I know there's some shade trees there. Obviously, it wouldn't be, you wouldn't want to encroach within the base areas of the oak trees for, for, for different reasons, but with the grass, but I think it provides a, a, a nice aesthetic, you know, setting. And, you know, I, I guess if I were leaning one way or the other, I would look at that site only because there is a lack of play area for children that, that I think is an opportunity and is beneficial to when sports are going on because you've only got 12 kids on the field there and, you know, a family comes, they've got all kinds of kids generally and so it, it provides a different area for, for children to play and it's consistent with what has been planned in the past. I didn't realize this, but they're showing D Street through here to be constructed. Is there a reason we wouldn't abandon that? I guess that, that's, I don't know if that's really relevant tonight, but I mean, I don't know why we would develop a street to separate the two facilities.
I think the, the original concept in the park master plan was to develop that as parking, where you'd have, you know, some parallel parking along the sides and have a, a connection there, so it wouldn't really be a true street, it would be, you know.
Oh, okay, I can see, you could have off-street parking.
You could have some off-street parking, so I think that was the intent.
Is there a reason why security cameras would be included on the larger of the two sites and not the smaller one or is?
No, we could add it, we were trying to come up with a more of a cost-effective alternative.
Okay.
So, but again, that could be added to either location.
Let me interject real quick. With Camp and, and I agree, I am going to be advocating security cameras and, and there's several reasons. There's some people in the community who have already purchased and paid for a statute dog that looks like Yaro that I am, uh, needs to be washed carefully and, and, and I would like to have it in a, there's actually, if you look on the, on the small field, oh, you can't see because of the trees, there's a little, uh, concrete path, or not path, I'm sorry, a pad where there used to be a bench and I'm hoping that this is one of the places where we can put this, uh, this dog that the community has purchased up on a pedestal type, uh, in honor of Yaro and, uh, hopefully a plaque in, in honor of Kevin Ton also. That's just sketching in my brain what I see maybe we could do, but I, I think that we need to have some kind of, uh, security camera to keep an eye on these things 'cause, you know, there's people out there that aren't so happy with our police department as, as most of us are, so.
We can certainly add that to the cost. I believe if, depending on how many cameras you want to add, you need at least a couple. It's, uh, you know, five to $10,000 for that, so that could be certainly added to the cost of the project.
I can go to Costco and get five cameras on a monitor for like, I suppose a thousand bucks or something. That's all I.
Okay. Councilmember Cruz?
Well.
Give your hand up.
Just out of curiosity, the, the dog park we have up in the north area, does it have DG or does it have DG and grass or what?
It has concrete paths and grass. Um, their, grass becomes a maintenance issue because the dogs tend to tear it up, especially if it gets wet and so we have had some challenges with that and researching other dog parks, it seems to be that the preferred surface, we looked at gravel, seems to not be good for the dogs because of their joints and things. Bark was okay, but it seems, there seemed to be some issues with some, some bacteria and stuff that can get in there and DG was a really, a popular item because it's easy to clean, it's easy to maintain, dogs love to run on it. And then the canine grass was actually, that's kind of the primo one because it's very low maintenance, dogs absolutely love it, doesn't require irrigation system, but it is more expensive. So it's, you know, that would be, I think staff's preference if we had, would be a canine grass, to put the artificial grass in, that would be the best. Certainly, the, the, the real grass is an option, we can take a look at that and I think from, you know, aesthetic standpoint, it is nice, it's just the, the maintenance issue I think is the biggest issue with the regular, regular grass that you have.
Personally, I think that's either the grass or the canine grass, as you mentioned, would be a good idea, but I, I tend to agree with the council member Campion, send it back to the Parks and Rec Commission and get public comment on it.
Yes, whatever the dogs want, they're the ones that'll be walking on it, you know.
Councilmember Payne?
Well, I agree it should go back to Parks and Recs. I know they spent a lot of time putting together the master plan and of course, we can always vary from it, but I think that the proper process would be to send it back to Parks and Rec Commission. At that time, they could get a lot of feedback from even the people that play baseball there. They may have some thoughts as well as the, the people that live in the area. I have some thoughts about which one I would prefer if asked. I think the one on the corner there would be more visible if you want to have a memorial. I think more people would see it other than just people that are walking their dogs. I think that it's a really good idea and I think the Parks and Rec Commission will also agree that we, this is a good idea to recognize a memorial for Kevin Ton, but I do think it should go back to the Parks and Rec Commission. Oh, one other thing, uh, funding, I didn't see any indication as to how we would be funding either one of those and I'm guessing that will be discussed somewhere along.
Well, the staff report indicates that there's really two options. One is that the council fund it out of the city's budget, general fund, or that the, there's a community fundraising effort. They try to get, and I think that's what Vice Mayor Singleton was, was alluding to is go back to the community and see if the community is interested in supporting and sponsoring this type of endeavor by the city and that would certainly be up to the councils as far as how you wanted to approach this, if you wanted to approach it as a community-wide effort, fundraising effort to, to, to put this park in or whether the, the city council wanted just to take money out of its own budget and do it, or maybe a combination of the two. Maybe there's a city contribution and there's a community fundraising contribution.
And that's why I've stated that there were a lot of people in the community who said they want to donate to the park that have already donated, so there is funding already out there that has been donated towards this effort.
Okay. I think that's a consideration.
Absolutely.
Also, if you have to have fundraising projects, that sort of puts it out there a little bit further before you can start, but I think we'll get a lot of good input on it.
I'm just gonna play devil's advocate here, I just want to ask you, 'cause I never go over to the other dog park, does it get used a lot? Does it? Does it? We don't live over there, you do go take your dog over there? Oh, okay. I, I didn't know, I just, I haven't looked. I didn't mean it that way. I just, you know, wondered, just a question there. But I do have a thought on, on the smaller dog park, putting it over there by the, um, baseball diamond over there. In the summertime, families all go over there and they put their pop-ups there and they hang out there with their kids and they play, so I think that would encroach upon that and I don't like the idea of being over there, that's just personal. They go over there and they hang out all day and that is the only place where the kids can run around and play that aren't playing softball. And I see it doing all the time and I've attended quite a few games at that park and sat with the people underneath the, so I think that we need to take that into consideration that it's used a lot for, for purpose in the summertime. And I agree with everyone else, it should probably go back to the Parks and Rec Commission and have some light for, for a while. Do we need a motion on that or?
Um, it has to be my recommendation to entertain a motion to direct the matter to the Parks and Rec Commission for a public hearing.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Any more discussion?
Comments made by staff or by, by council.
So we'll make sure that we relay the information that was provided by the council tonight, summarize the discussion for the Parks and Rec Commission and they can take that into consideration when they.
Not necessarily direction, but just discussion.
Absolutely.
Uh, second, did I get a second somewhere? Okay, um, no, for, well, call for the vote. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now on to the resolution of the City Council approving changes to the Gulf Police Officers Association Memorandum of Understanding relating to overtime compensation and authorizing the city manager to execute side letter agreement number three, and that's to you, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The existing memorandum of agreement between the city and the Gulf Police Officers Association came effective back in July of 2011 and when we negotiated that agreement, we put in a provision that provides that overtime compensation to the employees would be in the form of a compensatory time off. And we negotiated that provision back in 2011 as a cost-saving measure to reduce the operational expense of the department during the city's difficult economic times. That particular provision in the MOU has been unpopular among some police department employees and it's proven a little bit more difficult to manage administratively than we had anticipated because folks are sometimes reluctant to volunteer to fill in shifts in order to get CTO time as opposed to paid overtime. So we are at a point right now where the economic conditions are getting a little bit better in the commi, in the, uh, community, so we're recommending at this point in time that the council approve a side letter agreement which would be for a short period of time from basically now through the end of June, which would put the department back on paid overtime and then assuming that overtime is controlled and it, and it works over the next several months, then potentially a permanent amendment would come back for council consideration as part of the budget process. So on behalf of, can I answer any questions that council has?
Anyone have any questions?
Um, on the, the estimated $50,000 in, in anticipated overtime, that would be in addition to, I'm, I'm assuming, um, overtime that was, I guess for budget purposes identified between December 1 and December 15, I'll say of last year, because it, the way it reads, it, it appears as though they have to predetermine how much they would like paid out under the old provisions.
Um, my understanding is that's the estimated increase between basically March 1 through the end of June 30th, that would be the, the cost of this interim proposal. Is that?
Yes. So that, okay, so the, the other, the other is a, in the budget, okay, okay.
The addition of, just by making this change, okay, I see.
The other question, um, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the, the other question, I, I see where the provision for the, uh, CTO, compensatory time off, in excess of, it says it can exceed 200 hours, is, is this the only employee group that has that provision or all employee groups allowed to do that?
Um, I'm sorry. This is the only employee group that can accrue 200 hours of CTO.
There are different limits for different groups, CTO.
Okay.
But every, every group has the option of taking either, um, when they work overtime, taking it as paid overtime or compensatory time off and there's different limits of how much comp time you can accrue.
Right, within specified periods of time, right, okay, okay, thank you.
Is this, is this more or less than the other departments?
The police department 200 hours is more than the GPSU group, for example, I believe it's 80 hours, is that right?
Quite a bit.
Right.
And we boosted the, we boosted the number at the time we negotiated this provision because if we didn't increase the cap, then basically there would be an inability of the employees to actually work overtime and, and get the compensated time off.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a good question. Any more discussion? Um, have motions?
Move to adopt.
Second? Second. Call for the vote. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now on, wait on a second. Okay, City Attorney's Office. An ordinance amending chapter 2.70 of the Gulf Municipal Code regarding the membership of the Planning Commission, and that's to you.
Okay, um, here are council members, at the, at the last city council meeting, the, um, just had an iPad malfunction here, I'll need to.
Be better, again.
I don't know, so at the, at the last city council meeting on February 5th, the council directed that staff prepare an ordinance increasing the membership of the Planning Commission from five members to seven and the proposed ordinance that's before you this evening does increase that Planning Commission membership as directed, make some other minor revisions relating to the change in the quorum of the commission from three to five members, from the existing three of five members to four of seven members. Additionally, the ordinance provides that the two additional at-large members would be appointed by the City Council to serve two-year terms. Now, there's a lot of options relating to the terms that the council could decide for the at-large members. Certainly, you could be the two-year as proposed, it could be a four-year term, um, it could be a four-year stagger term where one member comes on for two years and then is replaced after two years for a four-year term, so each one goes off after two years. Frankly, you could have an indefinite appointment until the member resigns or the council replaces, so there's, there are certainly a lot of options. The reason that I proposed in the ordinance before you this evening, the two-year term, is because it puts the city council and future city councils in a position where they have a maximum amount of flexibility in two years as council members come and go. If the council is satisfied with the, the work of the at-large members, if those two at-large members want to continue in those posts, then they can be reappointed. There's no limit on the number of times that a planning commissioner can be reappointed. So if you have somebody that's building up some, uh, some historical, historical, um, experience, if they are mid-pro, mid-project and you want to reappoint them, you have that discretion. But it also puts the city council in a position that if the council at the time feels that there's a need for a change, then you don't have to go through the awkward process of removing folks from the commission, you just appoint folks that you believe best reflect the, the needs of the community at that point in time. So I did put in the two-year, uh, the recommendation to serve a two-year term. However, um, I did prepare alternate ordinances which I have with me this evening that would be language for a four-year term and for a four-year stagger term where one member would serve two years and then, uh, after two years. member would serve two years and then uh, after two years come off and the new person would, would rotate into a four-year term. So if the council desires to move towards uh, any of those options, I'll pass out the language and go over the uh, ordinance with you. I wanted to have it prepared this evening because as you may recall, once we introduce an ordinance, if we change the language between introduction and the time you adopt it at the next meeting, we have to basically repeat the, the introduction of the ordinance and we'd lose a couple of weeks. So I wanted to uh, be in a position where we could uh, complete the introduction tonight if at all possible. So with that, on behalf of the attorney, any questions the council has?
Council? Anybody have any questions or thoughts on how they want it to be?
The one that's currently presented.
I couldn't hear you, Mark.
The one that's currently presented, I like very much. Okay, the one, okay, I'm sorry. For those in the public, the one of the two-year that you've got currently listed in there?
On the A.
Yes, thank you. A.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Yeah. I do. Um, you know, going through all of this and to be quite honest, when I think about how this council voted previously to um, keep five members and not have an alternate, I wonder how we got here. And, and I think I know how we got here, I'm pretty sure I know how we got here. When I failed to reappoint uh, LeAnn McFadden, I got a lot of um, feedback. Uh, some people were upset, some people were angry that I didn't reappoint her. And um, so I think this is one way to maybe give her another chance to be on the planning commission. The thing that bothers me is um, before we even voted on this, I had gotten some input that I think it's a good idea. In fact, it was um, Mr. Keegie that sent me this email. I think this is a good idea, but I will only, and I would like to serve, but I would only like to do so if um, a LeAnn McFadden is considered first. I think if we're gonna do this, this needs to be um, open to anybody that wants to apply. I think they should be looked at fairly as opposed to just um, Ms. Keegie and LeAnn McFadden. Um, it's sad that we get involved in personalities and politics and I hope this doesn't necessarily offend anybody here, but I felt like it was important for me to make this statement.
Anybody else? Well, I had been looking at it for times before too, having been on the planning commission and worked on other commissions and thought, you know, when I was on the planning commission, this is my personal opinion, I, you know, got some flack sometimes and I think that, well, I'm not gonna put anybody else in it, you know, from council members that were just voting the way their council member wanted them to and were very strict on that. So my point was why even have a planning commission? And so that's why I did like the thought of having two extras. And also, you know, the city of Sacramento is bigger, I understand, they have like fifteen and they do a lot of work, but the city of Lodi has seven, correct? We looked into...
Yes, the uh, Lodi has seven, uh, they have, their at-large are uh, four-year terms. Both of them have a seven-member commission with two-year terms. Roosevelt has a seven-member commission and all of the commissioners are at-large. They've served uh, served the pleasure of the council and appointed by the council. West SAC has seven members that are appointed all by the mayor with, with the consent of the City Council and they don't have a uh, term. And then Sacramento does have uh, thirteen members on their planning commission with staggered four-year terms. So there's really no uh, consistent way, the council has complete discretion in how you want to structure this body, uh, depending upon what you think is in the best interest of this community.
Yeah, unfortunately, I feel like all seven should be voted on by everybody, but that would mean changing it and I, uh, I, that's just kind of the way I feel like. And I know on other committees, each council member appoints someone, but I do feel like the planning commission is a different sort of bird and that's just kind of my feeling on that.
I did want to make comments because I, I, we're probably going a little long. In, in my... My, my reason is, as I've stated in the past, I, I think that the, the council looked at this, they studied it, um, they deleted the alternates position and, you know, for over twenty-five years, you know, I serviced the uh, the planning commission and I didn't see an issue with attendance. Uh, it didn't jeopardize meetings. So I, I guess I looked at what is the necessity and I, I, I don't, I don't see the necessity. Uh, it doesn't mean that I'm adamantly opposed to it, but I, I just don't think it's necessary.
Well, I don't, can I just say?
Sure.
Attendance wasn't my main reason for doing it.
Okay.
You know, I mean...
Okay.
Another thing is we, if I may interject, uh, we have a lot of big things coming to Galt and uh, uh, so I'm looking at the big picture and uh, more input from the community and uh, we're gonna need to be staffed as best we can for the planning commission for what we have coming ahead.
Councilmember Cruz?
I just want to say something. I was part of the ad hoc committee that eliminated the alternates and I still feel strongly about that. If you're gonna be part of a committee, you're part of a committee. We don't need alternates. However, with that said, looking back at the history of our planning commission and this one area where we will, will agree to disagree for right now, councilmember Campion. No, they have not missed meetings, but they have postponed them. Why? Because they didn't have a quorum. Why didn't have a quorum? Don't know, don't care. If you're appointed to, to a uh, a group, be there. If you can't, bow out. With seven people there, we're going to have a quorum, especially the way that this is currently written, I like it. And I agree with, with councilmember Singleton, where you've got big things coming down the pike. I can't see us waiting another month because Johnny's got a toothache, I can't make the meeting. Sorry!
In, in those cases, in, in, just to, to provide a little clarification, if um, a meeting couldn't be scheduled on the regular night, what we did is look for the next available night and we had special meetings.
Well, a prime example on this was shortly after we took the vote to, to move forward on this, the night of the, of the um, of the next meeting for the, the planning commission, I get an email. We've, we postponed it. Why? We don't have a quorum. Wow. Hmm. I guess we made, we made the right decision the two nights before. Let's get it in place. I'm tired of not having quorums, let's get this thing rolling. It's like us saying, well, wait a minute. Kurt, Mark, you guys can't make it to the meeting. Oh, we don't have a quorum. Damn. Council meeting. It doesn't, does not, it's not how a government should run. We should be, be able to be trusted, have trust. Okay, I'm getting ahead of myself here. We have been elected because the people trust us to do the right thing. That means the people we appoint to positions are in the same boat. We trust them to make decisions that are gonna affect what we do when we make the final decision. It's just basically boils down to be professional. If you're gonna have a situation where you can't make a meeting, I need somebody there who can. It has nothing to do with the who's, has nothing to do with Ms. Keegie, it has nothing to do with Ms., Ms. McFadden. I don't even know if they're gonna apply or not. That's not why I brought it up. I brought it up for the simple fact of numbers. We've got things coming down the pike and I wish I could stay with there without screwing things up for the rest of the city, but that's just the way things work. I need a planning commission who's going to be there and make the decisions so that when the council gets together, we're not saying, well, we can't make the decision on this because we have to wait for the planning commission because they missed the last meeting. No. And now I'll get off my soapbox.
I think we only had one time that happened.
It happened immediately after our last, last meeting.
But still, it's only one time.
Well, that one time, there was trouble prior to that.
Well, and I just want to say one thing, I'm sorry that at any meeting, somebody's name had to be brought up anyway, anyhow, anything, because I just don't think that's the thing you do. Um, okay, oh, do we have a...
Is there any public comments, uh?
Oh, I'm sorry. The comments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, do I have a motion?
Sorry, I made the motion before we started.
Okay.
I thought Mark did first, but I'll make the motion on uh, the proposal A. Motion is, uh, stated.
I just said I like it, yeah. All second.
Call for the vote, please. Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
No.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now we're at the replacement of the police department handgun and that is Hugh Chief Fowen.
Good evening, council, mayor. Uh, tonight we're talking about uh, the possibility of replacing the police handguns. And Lieutenant Jim Updegrove, our operations commander and range master, will be presenting the staff report.
He was gonna keep going. Let's start back down. Ah, good evening, mayor. Before you tonight, the uh, staff report with the recommendation that council authorized the chief of police to deliver uh, the existing law enforcement handguns that we carry here to the department, um, and some rifles to LC Action Police Supply in exchange for new handguns. In nineteen ninety-nine, the Gulf Police Department purchased Glock handguns as the issued uh, handgun for the department. Prior to that, officers coming onto the department, uh, carried their own gun they purchased and carried their, uh, their own handgun, uh, which kind of resulted in lots of different makes, models, calibers, uh, and whatnot. So in nineteen ninety-nine, it was the desire of the department to uh, to standardize the handgun we purchased Glocks. Um, and they've served us well, uh, but like every piece of equipment, they're starting to show uh, signs of age and signs of wear, so um, we contacted Glock. Glock has upgraded uh, the handgun that we currently carry, uh, which allows for um, better ambidextrous uh, controls, uh, has uh, better ergonomics and has a different recoil system, which is a little bit better for us. Um, so they, they directed us to their west coast supplier, LC Action. And we contacted them and LC Action agreed and put together a proposal for us to uh, purchase back our existing handguns and, cough joke, our existing handguns and along with some rifles and uh, kind of a little hodgepodge of additional guns that we, that we've collected over the years. Uh, so the proposal essentially is this and it's attached to your staff report. The Glock or LC Action will uh, purchase back our forty-seven existing Glock handguns, seven MP rifles, uh, that we had for the old SWAT team and twenty miscellaneous guns that we've collected over the years and we've had in inventory for, for many, many years. In exchange for that, uh, they will uh, they will uh, give us uh, forty-three of their new Glock handguns and along, and six, is that right? Yeah, forty-three, uh, yeah, uh, their new handguns along with six training guns. So that's a total of forty-nine, uh, forty-nine handguns in exchange for the, the forty-seven that we have along with getting rid of some of our uh, excess inventory.
What a deal.
That is, it's a good job.
Yeah. Jim?
So it's a good opportunity to uh, upgrade our guns and also to get rid of uh, some of our inventory that we don't need anymore.
When you say training guns, are you talking about red guns or actually functional?
No, they're functional guns. They're, they're uh, they're uh, similar to the sim guns.
Awesome.
Yeah. So it, it allows us to do uh, to do more interactive training.
Do you have to change out the, the leather holsters or do these holster in than what you have?
No, yeah, they'll fit. Our, our current equipment will fit. Uh, we're also gonna change out the magazines, but our magazines that we currently have now are also working. But we'll upgrade those as well. So it's pretty much straight across trade.
I don't know, don't know about that. The MP fives, those are...
Yeah.
Well, those, didn't the city pay just about that amount, what you're getting for the trade when you bought those? I know they went up in price.
I don't remember what we purchased, the original, the original purchase.
The original purchases were H and K's and then we ended up having to return those.
We had problems with those, we sent them back and we ended up with uh, with Glocks. I don't know if the original purchase prices of the Glocks were the... But they've gone up in price, they've definitely gone up in price, everything has. The new generation, the Gen fours, uh, it's their, it's their newest model and um, it uh, it's, it has better ergonomics to it for uh, people with smaller hands, it's ambidextrous for wrong-handed people and uh...
I don't think I'm wrong-handed by shooting longhand.
So, um, it's a good deal. LC Action worked with us, uh, I think they're, they're offering, it was a good proposal. I think it's uh, it's well worth it, it's a good opportunity for the department.
Awesome.
Okay, any questions? Thanks. Lieutenant Updegrove.
It's a good deal.
Awesome. Move to authorize.
Okay, do they have a second? Any more further discussion? Call for the vote, please, Liz. Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
So now we're going to adjourn to the Gulf Habitat Foundation. Of course, Lee can come back. Okay. Full call, please. Board members, Singleton?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Do we take these one at a time because they're not consented, Mark? Do we just take them both?
I'm just taking consent.
Yes, they're under departmental, I'm sorry, one at a time. Okay, that's the minutes of the December fourth, two thousand and twelve meeting. Um, are there any additions, additions, corrections to the...
Move for approval.
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Board members, Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
And then the semi-annual meeting of the Gulf Habitat Foundation for two thousand and thirteen and bylaws amendment number one. To you, Andy.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, this, as you know, the city owns seventy acres north of the wastewater treatment plant uh, that we use as a Swainson Hawk Habitat Preserve. It compensates uh, for unavoidable impacts to annual grassland foraging habitat for Swainson Hawks and other species approved by Department of Fish and Wildlife. Um, almost exactly a year ago, the Gulf Habitat Foundation was formed as a nonprofit corporation to hold the conservation easement and to manage and monitor the preserve in accordance with the adopted management plan. Um, city council serves as the board of directors to that foundation, um, and in accordance with the bylaws of the foundation, the board must meet at least two times a year with the annual meeting held on the first Tuesday in March, so here we are. Um, for business matters at this meeting, staff is first recommending a minor amendment to the bylaws of the foundation. Um, the, this is to simply correct the title of the vice president of the Gulf Habitat Foundation, uh, in section nine point one. The title should now be Community Development Director instead of Principal Planner. Uh, the Principal Planner position is frozen. Uh, the job title is correct on all other documents, we just had this one discrepancy. So the resolution that's attached will correct that, uh, so that'll be our first bylaws amendment. Uh, for other matters, as I noted in the two thousand and twelve annual report back in December, uh, the site was lacking the sufficient number of no trespassing signs in order to make it uh, prosecutable for potential trespassers on the site. Uh, since the ta... that task is a responsibility of the tenant, uh, I've worked with the tenant and those signs have since been installed, so we're now in compliance. Uh, as the staff report shows, the current accounting of the mitigation credits at the preserve is shown, um, the city's used preserved lands to address habitat impacts from several projects, including Walker Park, the Central Gulf Interchange and the Twin Cities Roundabout Project. We have approximately seven and a half acres that remain available for other projects. Uh, no action is required by the board of directors tonight except for consideration of the proposed bylaws amendment. And again, that's accomplished by adoption of the attached resolution. Uh, we ask that you simply receive the staff report and approve the bylaws.
Okay, um, is there any comments from the council?
Good report. Move, uh, staff's recommendation.
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Board members, Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now we're gonna adjourn and resume into the Gulf City Council. And the legislature, uh, we already did the commission.
Yeah, move.
Okay, so now we're to comment by staff.
I don't have any comments.
I don't have any comments, staff, any other, any comments?
Just a quick update, and we've had, through Jason's weekly report, they've been giving you some updates. I am pleased to announce that as of a week ago Friday, we did successfully complete final testing on a new, new replacement generator for City Hall, and it is backing up major systems, including all of our email servers and data connections that keep water and sewer systems running for the city. And I do need to apologize to councilmember Payne, the first test several weeks prior to that, we hadn't gotten the word out as effectively as perhaps we could have, and I think we had several meetings planned and we're in the dark with a couple of those, and so we tried to do a little better job this last time of communicating that. It is sort of a necessary evil, doesn't do any good to have an emergency generator if you're not sure if it's gonna work or not, and we actually, the reason we had to do a second round of testing was we did find a glitch in the automatic transfer switch, which the motor will fire up when it senses a loss of power, and then about thirty seconds later, once it's up to full RPMs, it'll automatically switch power to the generator, and for some reason, that was tripping out and wasn't kicking in as planned. So we did get some diagnostics out from the factory, and all was well, and we don't have full backup for the entire building, although the generator is sized to allow that future upgrade. By now, a transfer switch limits us to just some emergency circuits that would mirror what was previously powered by the previous generator, which died, I guess, about a year ago. So hopefully no more interruptions, and come bad weather or high water, we should have power in the building.
Let's not hope high water.
Any other staff? Okay, comments by city council? We'll start ladies first.
Just also want to echo what Mr. Baldwin said, wanted to thank all those who came out to support the spaghetti dinner to honor the game. We had some great high school athletes that got up and spoke, and it was so impressive to hear, to hear them. Not only were they outstanding athletes, but they were outstanding scholars as well. And the speaker emphasized that no matter how good your skills are, if you don't have the good character to go along with it, you're not gonna be successful. And appreciate Mayor there and Councilman Singleton to support the project, and we'll be doing more fundraising to keep this going. Also, I attended the library board, and a special thanks to the Parks and Recs people for getting our doggie stations up, got all four of them up on A Street, and I've already heard from some of the neighbors that are really happy, so thank you.
Dog everywhere, huh?
Yes.
Councilmember Singleton?
I did attend the spaghetti feed, and it was really cool, because although they didn't win, the Liberty Ranch came in after we'd already started eating, everybody stood and cheered, it was really cool.
The basketball team.
I'm sorry, basketball team, I'm sorry, what did I say?
Did you even say what they were?
Oh, okay. That's it. But it was really great, I enjoyed myself, and a nice silent auction, all kinds of sports mobility there, it was something else. And the only other thing I have is that next meeting, I would like to recognize some people from our training facility out on Twin Cities Road from the correctional facility. That's all I have.
Do we have to vote on that? Okay, because I was just making sure we did it right.
No, I just have to-
Okay. I'm supposed to remind you about the chairs?
About what?
Chairs for your retreat.
Oh, yes.
Can we back up a minute?
Back up the chairs. Okay, the youth committee will be recruiting their new members and will be taking out our old members and the seniors that are graduating, so we scheduled a retreat at McFarren Ranch on May the eighteenth, and we'll be doing our strategic plan. We're gonna have a state of the youth report on the youth of Galt, and from that, we'll be making our plans for the upcoming year. So I would like to ask permission or whatever it takes from the council to have two tables and approximately twenty chairs that I will deliver myself out there, if that's okay.
Well, that sounds like a great idea to have to do planning for the youth, that's a good one.
I learned something.
Yeah, that's a good one. Okay, councilmember Cruz, we'll go to you.
I wish I had been there Saturday night, Al, however, I think if I had been, you wouldn't see everybody up here right now with the exception of possibly a hurt, I was highly contagious. Okay, I'll look forward to it. Other than that, that's all I've got.
Councilmember Campion?
Actually, I've been talking with staff, doing some preliminary analysis and review. If you recall, during the election, one of the issues I was real concerned with was the annexation of the Liberty High School. So I would ask that, because of the two-hour limit, that I could get approval to have over two hours to work with staff and others to hopefully move that process along, if that's okay.
Do we not already have that being worked on by, not by staff necessarily, there's already been interest in that property, is that correct?
There's the Eastview project that's been presented to staff that would involve future annexation of that property, which would include, and we talked to them about potentially annexing Liberty Ranch High School as well as Estrelita High School out there. That likely takes a couple of years to get to the point of annexation. I think what councilmember Campion is looking at is seeing whether it's feasible to pursue something in advance of that.
So in other words, the city paying for it instead of the landowner, or what?
Well, I don't know that that's what he's asking. I think at this point, all he's asking for is to evaluate whether there would be costs, what the costs are, and then present some options back to the city council as far as what it might take to do that.
I think there's a quicker way than rather than one, waiting on a development proposal, and then two. There are disadvantages to being tied, so to speak, with that proposal, because if there's controversy, you have, you know, the sequel process, and, you know, the chances for delay are much greater, and I believe there may be a process that would allow it to occur more expeditiously. And like the manager said, before anything is spent or any commitment is made, obviously city council has to be involved, so that would all come back to-
Well, I was just curious, I was just asking.
No, no.
I'm happy to see what we can come up with.
Absolutely. So Mayor, that would require a motion to direct staff to work with councilmember Campion on the Liberty Ranch annexation proposal, and you could entertain that motion this evening. And the reason is because even though it's not on the agenda, when you're just giving staff direction, it's not required to be agendaized.
Still moved, right.
Okay, moved.
Okay.
Call for the vote, please, Liz. Vice Mayor Singleton?
I was gonna help you. Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
And then just a little comment from me, I attended the spaghetti dinner too and had a great time, got to see a lot of people and got to see Armando's lovely wife, and had to sit and get some to go to some of those things where you get to be staff, but you get to hang out and-
Did she tell you some good stories about him?
She told some really good stories about him, and stay tuned. But it was, it was a lot of fun and had a good time, and then the next day, I went back to Chavola to the blue and gold lunch, the scouts, and it was kind of funny because both, to watch the decorations on both nights, you know, the second day, the kids all had done a movie, each of their tables was after a movie, so they had Up and Away that was all balloons and that.
Oh, where you mean?
Yeah. And had lunch and had their award ceremony, so had a kind of a little busy weekend at the Littleton Center, but had a good time and met some new people. So with that, anybody else? Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.